It's primary kids.
It is now 6:30 PM and I would like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual religion.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements, we will start with Dr. Ivory.
President Wilson.
Seven mindset.
I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, could you please call her?
Mrs. Kostic. Mr. Ivory.
Here.
Mrs. McConnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Rose.
Present.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Present.
President Wilson.
Present.
You have seven present.
Thank you, Dr. Ivory. I'm sorry.
Seven minutes, 100% accountable. The mindset teaches us that we are responsible for our actions, attitude, and results. Instead of blaming others for making excuses or making excuses, you focus on what you can control. When you own your choices, you gain power and you shape your future.
Good evening. Thanksgiving break is a great time to explore School Links with your middle and high school students. This one-stop platform helps students chart their path towards success, starting with career interest surveys and strengths surveys. At this time of year, families should be reviewing and digitally approving their students' course plans inside of School Links. To learn how, just click on the School Links button on your school website and scroll to the Course Planner Guide for Parents to watch a tutorial video. Other tools on this site include exploring traditional, emerging, and military career fields, exploring two-year and four-year colleges, taking virtual reality college campus tours, searching for scholarships, learning about financial aid, finding internship and volunteer opportunities, creating digital portfolios or resumes, and communicating with counselors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our amazing special education teachers. Your patience, dedication, and heart make a huge difference every day. We celebrate you on December 2nd and appreciate you always.
Good evening.
The Wraparound Center holds a bi-weekly drive-up food pantry. Over 150 boxes of food are distributed each week to local families. Everyone is welcome. PPS enrollment is not required. Pet food and kitty litter are available. The Wraparound Center is located on the Latrobe Street side of Treewind School at 1419 South Folkers Avenue. If you wish to make a donation to the Hand Up Food Pantry, a wish list of needed supplies can be found at psd150.org/pantry-wish-list.
Your mental health and well-being matter. Peoria Public Schools has teamed up with Cartwell to offer free therapy sessions for students. Virtual appointments are available to receive therapy in the comfort of your home. If you're interested, simply reach out to your school principal to learn more and get started.
Thank you to our Amazing Shake volunteers. Peoria Public Schools is thrilled to launch our first Amazing Shake at Woodruff Career and Technical Center in just a few weeks. This district-wide competition for 3rd through 8th graders gives students the chance to showcase their confidence, professionalism, and life skills through fast-paced, real-world challenges. At this time, the district would like to express a hearty thank you to our community leaders who have stepped up to be judges at this event. Your support makes this incredible experience possible, and we look forward to seeing you on December 9th, 10th, or 11th.
Good evening. Thanksgiving break reminder. Thanksgiving break is just around the corner. Schools are closed November 26th, 28th. District offices are closed November 27th, 28th. Enjoy your holiday.
Good evening. Read 30 minutes a day. 30 minutes on Thanksgiving break. In autumn's quiet, warm, and slow, a book awaits where the firelights glow. Just 30 minutes, take a break. A chapter's calm is yours to take. While laughter fills the holiday, let reading soothe you day by day. A little time, a peaceful space. Thanksgiving rests in every page. One Click College Admit gives you all eligible, gives all eligible high school seniors offers of general admission to Illinois public universities and their community college based on their GPA, with no application, no fees, essays, or letters of recommendation. Learn more at https://t.co/m3v0k2kmbc. I'm sure you're getting all this. Okay, you can get it from your counselor. Learn more, get this information from your counselor. Illinois State Board of Education. No, for high school seniors, the participating colleges are Chicago State University, Eastern Illinois University, Governor's State University, Northern Illinois University, Northeastern Illinois University, Southern Illinois University Carbondale, Southern Illinois University Edwardsville, and Western Illinois University. According to the One Click Admits website, the process for applying involves creating a COM app account and profile and entering required information like your GPA and Illinois address. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I'd also like to recognize and showcase our boards here designed by our students. To my right is Whittier Wildcats. And yup, shout out to Whittier that's in the building. And then to my left is Glen Oak Chargers. Let's make some love for Glen Oak, yeah. Awesome. Next, we have Remarkable Spirit Awards. Sarah Ponditz, Principal, Whittier.
Good evening, Dr. Karat, President Wilson, and members of the board. Tonight, we have the honor of celebrating a teacher whose energy, dedication, and heart have transformed not just our classroom, but our entire community. It is my privilege to recognize Ms. Stacy Payton as the recipient of the Remarkable Spirit Award. From the moment you walk into our classroom, now lovin'ly known as Payton's Palace, you can feel something different. The walls are brick, the stage sparkles, and students sit a little taller. They cheer a little louder and they believe deeper. And they know they are part of something magical. Because Ms. Payton created an environment where joy fuels learning and every single child knows they belong. This summer, Ms. Payton attended Ron Clark Academy and the transformation followed has been nothing short of extraordinary. She returned to Peoria renewed, inspired, and ready to pour that passion directly into her students, and she has done exactly that with purpose, consistency, and heart. In Payton's Palace, learning is not passive, it's electric. Students chant, call back, and celebrate each other's victories. They take pride in earning the honor of becoming prince and princesses for the day. They rise to the expectations she sets because they know she believes they can achieve them, and the results speak for themselves. Ms. Payton's class attendance for the year is currently at 97%, often hitting 100% days, and that is quite unheard of. She has had two full weeks of perfect attendance already this school year, which is also unheard of. Our students are running to school because of the joy, rigor, and love she brings into the room every single day. But beyond the numbers, there is something more powerful. Her students have learned to uplift each other. They cheer one another on. They show kindness, courage, and confidence. They have brought into the vision she created a vision that says you are important, you are capable, and you are going to shine here. That is her remarkable spirit. Ms. Payton embodies what it means to serve with the heart. She shows up fully for her kids, her team, and our entire school. She models what happens when educators invest in themselves, embrace growth, and bring the renewed energy back to the classroom. Whittier Primary is better because of her. Peoria Public Schools is stronger because of her, and her students are, her students' lives are changed because of her. Tonight, we honor a teacher who leads with joy, teaches with purpose, and radiates a spirit that lifts everyone around her. Please join me in celebrating the incredible, the inspiring, and the one and only Ms. Stacy Payton.
Okay. I did prepare a speech, so I guess I'll go ahead and read it. Thank you so much. I'm so overwhelmed. Goodness. In order to understand what this award means to me, you must first know what I have overcome. In 2022, I lost my husband and one of my 3rd grade students to gun violence, two tragedies only months apart. Teaching had always been my passion, my joy, and my purpose, but these events robbed me of the upbeat spirit I once brought into the classroom. I continued to teach and gave my students my best, but the true happiness I had always found in teaching fell out of reach. Then this past summer, I had the opportunity to attend the Ron Clark Academy Educator Professional Development in Atlanta, Georgia. This experience changed my life and ultimately the lives of my students. Learning that Ron Clark had also lost a student to gun violence and still radiated such joy and passion for teaching sparked something inside me that I cannot fully put into words. Interacting with the students at RCA and seeing the pure happiness on their faces was phenomenal. I left knowing that I had to make school fun again. I realized that children need a place where they truly feel happy, and I became determined to create that space for them this school year. Watching my students excel has been all the proof I need that I am on the right path. Hearing a child say, "Ms. Payton, I am smart now," or watching a student who once said, "Ms. Payton, I can't do this," I stutter. Became one of the top 10 finalists in our Amazing Shake fills me with indescribable pride. We have celebrated three full weeks of 100% attendance and maintained 97% overall. Parents text me to say their children are begging to come to school even when they're too sick to attend. Now, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask my students to come up just so we can share a couple things that they do in the classroom. So come up with me, guys. Yes, this is, they are the true spirit, not me. They are my true spirit. Yes, you guys are. All right. All right. Are we ready? You guys can do this. You've got it. Are you ready? Yes, you do. All right. You know exactly what to say. In Payton's Positive Palace, we read. A good paragraph has. A sentence starts with a. Ends with. And then I've got to get some math in there, too. Zero, one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. And then we learn from.
Wait, 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 Ms. Payton. Wait, wait, wait. We have one final surprise for Ms. Stacy Payton.
What's up, Stacy Payton? This is Ron Clark here at RCA, and I just want to say congratulations. I heard about the award that you're receiving from the district on November 24th. Let's go. That is awesome, but as well deserved. You created that Payton's Place, which is awesome. You have a 97% attendance rate. What is that about? That's outstanding. You got your kids chanting, cheering, uplifting each other. That's all beautiful. But you know why you really deserve the award? It's because you're remarkable spirit. You are outstanding. You love them kids. You are ten toes down for those kids, and you will go above and beyond and do whatever it takes to make a difference in their lives. And for that, that's why you deserve this award. I just want to say I love you. You should be very proud of yourself and keep up the great work.
Congrats, Ms. Payton.
That was a very hard secret to keep. That was the hardest. Yup, you know me. I'm not going to keep it secret. We are beyond proud. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, you ready? One, two, three. One this way, two. One, two, three. Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have Sean McGinnis, Principal, Peoria High School.
Good evening, Dr. Karat. Good evening, Board. I'm glad I wrote something down after following that. So, tonight, we get to recognize someone who has made a lasting impact on Peoria High, not just by a job title, but through the way he's shown up for this school after every day. We are honoring Brian Duffy with the Remarkable Spirit Award, and with his retirement coming, this moment means a lot more. Brian has been a steady presence in our athletic department, the calm and the chaos, the one who makes things run even when it feels like things are on fire. He shows up early, he stays late, he does it with pride. Brian has helped carry on one of the longest-standing traditions in the state of Illinois, the IHSA State Cross-Country Meet. For the last five decades, Peoria High has hosted that. Brian has been a part of it for the last 14 years. It's a massive operation. If you have never been there, it is insane. I never knew that cross-country was so intense. But Brian has made sure that everything happens at a very high level. He has also lived the Peoria High full experience, from football state championships, basketball state championships, deep postseason runs, and all the pressure and emotion that come with them. He's been a part of it, front row, making sure that our programs and our kids are taken care of. Through transitions, through challenges, and through changes, Brian has never wavered. He kept his focus on the kids, he kept his focus on the coaches, he kept his focus on making sure the pride of the city is represented the right way. He doesn't complain, he doesn't make excuses, he just works consistently and with a high amount of integrity. Brian, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your loyalty, thank you for carrying on our traditions, our programs. Thank you most of all for supporting our kids. Thank you for leaving Peoria High a better place than when you found it. Enjoy your retirement. I'll make sure Beth knows you will. You've enjoyed, you've earned every minute of you. Thank you, Brian.
Dr. Karat and School Board. I want to be in that class. Athletic Director is the ultimate team position, and I'm just a team member with great people. Going back to Brett Elliott, Dr. Coleman, Sean McGinnis, we've had amazing leadership at Peoria High. Mr. Willis, Dr. Karat, we've worked together on so many things over the years and always positive and productive. All the coaches, all the players, it's not about me. It's all about the Lions. So, thank you.
Ms. Payton and Mr. Duffy, we love you dearly, both of you. Yes. And how many years?
He's been with the district 20-some years.
How many years have you been employed at Peoria Public Schools?
My 15th year as Athletic Director, 25th in the district.
Awesome.
And Mr. Duffy, I just want to personally say thank you. You have been a part of my family life, all of our experiences at Central, and you have always done an excellent job. And you are, you are student-focused, and you are a great team leader. So, thank you, and I hope you and Beth have a fantastic time in your retirement life. I know that you guys are still going to be engaged and busy, so I guess we'll just see you next week, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. We are now at the point of presentations by the audience. Presentations to the audience are limited to five minutes, and we ask that you keep them constructive. Board Policy 2:230, Paragraph Number 3 provides, "Cards will be accepted by the Board Secretary until the President calls the meeting to order. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker and no more than 20 minutes to each subject under discussion, except with the concurrence of the majority of the Board." We have two speakers this evening, and first we have Mr. Doug Shannon.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Karat. You know, just keeping the positivity from earlier in the meeting going. Obviously, our superintendent position is going to have big, big shoes to fill to keep this kind of energy and the remarkable things happening in Peoria Public Schools every day. Now, most parents and teachers can't come to the board meeting, you know, every, twice a month and communicate to you guys. And so, a lot of people have given feedback on a parent's page and as well to myself personally. And so, I wanted to share some of the things and some of the comments and questions that they've got about the superintendent search because I still have hope that this will all work out really well and that we'll have a great next leader for Peoria Public Schools. But here are the thoughts of many that have been shared with me, and so I'll just read those. The Board selected the firm from the heart, led by Dr. Milton, on August 25th. His firm had the highest cost, which was, you know, double the price of credible firms among those who bid. But price is only a problem in the absence of value. Our position was posted on October 16th, and the application window closed on November 19th, last week, which was 35 days as the application window. That's less than half the average length, half the length of other concurrent Illinois superintendent searches. Considering as our window was only half the average time of other search windows, like the parent's survey, should the applicant window be reopened in order to ensure a better outcome? For transparency and good faith, our community would love to have an update on how many applications we received and what the status of the search is. Because there is only one more board meeting here in December, and then the next one would be January 12th, which is after, from the stated schedule. That's actually after we'll already have our two finalists. So, it would be great to have some sort of update. And again, Board, please just, if you could share the number of completed applicants we've had or that we've received for Peoria Public Schools' next leader, many of us would be very excited to hear that update. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Ms. McKenna Henderson.
Dr. Karat, President Wilson, and members of the board. Good evening. I am a freshman at Richwood High School, and I wanted to talk about my concerns about voting on the upcoming calendars as a high school athlete. My family has been very involved in this process since the beginning. Families and students have not been asked how we feel about this calendar since it was adopted in 2022. I think it would be a good idea to ask families how they feel about this calendar before it is voted on and not just ask two questions. Would they like a shorter spring break? Would they like a shorter fall break? I would think it would be hard for families to find babysitters. I understand that families need to plan, but I urge that we only go through this with one year at this time. We need to ask for families and student input, at least high school students, if nothing else. As a family of high school athletes, a break is needed in the summer. Athletics continue throughout the fall and spring whether you are on break or not. Travel sports go through June and the majority of July. This year, we were in school by the end of July. I did see that next year is proposed for August 5th, but still most schools are starting back in August 17. When we had two weeks of spring break, students come back and feel like it's summer and are not motivated to learn. My brother came back from two weeks of break and had AP and IB testing. I know in primary, they have COGAT the week they come back from fall break. I feel for these students because I think it would give me added stress because I feel out of school mode. Breaks are good, but they need to be shorter. In closing, I am asking for considering approval of one year and shortening the breaks of upcoming calendars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Awesome. Response to audience presentation, Dr. Karat.
Thank you, President Wilson. And so, I'll just go straight to McKenna's feedback. And thank you, McKenna, so much for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. That's pretty cool. So, keep it up. And we appreciate that. We appreciate hearing your perspective as well, and you did a very nice job as well. One of the things, we had a lot of conversation at our last board meeting about the calendar. Dr. Coleman talked about the process. And I said to myself, one of the things I should have mentioned and supported Dr. Coleman with that I told her after was that of the purpose of the calendar. You know, after COVID, we, you know, we did the research. It took us about four years to do the research. There was a lot of surveys as well that were conducted. And the primary response, the primary purpose was for more frequent breaks for staff. And so, we talked about achievement, we talked about, you know, the other matrix. But it was because our work is so different, we're so unique from other school districts. There are 20 school districts in Peoria County, for example, and we're not like the other school districts. We're very, very different. Our work is very, very, very intense. Our teachers and staff work very, very hard. And so, the ultimate reason for the calendar, this modified calendar, we actually went, we wanted a balanced calendar, which would be 45 days in, 15 days similar to Valeska Hinton and Knoxville. But as a compromise, we ended up getting the parents and staff members to agree. So, and we talked also at the last board meeting during the conversation, which I thought was very, very healthy, that when we first started, it was 50-50, 15 in favor of staff and 50, or 15 in favor. And there was a recent survey that was conducted, maybe about, I don't know, two or three months ago when school started, and it was now 66% of staff members are in favor of it. I remember also talking if, with the families and the concession was, let's say, for example, you have travel sports, there are ways that we can work around that. And I believe, Board, I don't know, Ms. Wilson, I think you were the one that asked for the matrix. I don't know if I sent that data to you guys, but we even looked at the data, and it, there, you can tell that it's really making a difference for us as a district. So, just kind of wanted to share that with you in terms of discipline and attendance and academics and those sorts of things. But, you know, it's, it will be an ongoing conversation, so definitely don't lose sight of the ball. And, you know, you could talk to Dr. Coleman and the rest of the team as well if you want to provide any feedback. There is a committee, there is a calendar committee, and even. And even through your perspective and student perspective, you can always share ideas with them as well. So, I hope that helps. But I really appreciate you coming. We like when people have different ideas and different perspectives as well so that we can listen to that. Thank you, McKenna.
Thank you. Next, we have item number eight, approval of... You can, I mean, generally, I mean... Oh, okay.
But not about the calendar.
Okay. Thank you. At the end, remarks by Board. Moving along, we have item number eight, approval of October 27th, 2025 minutes.
No move. Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostick. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along, we have information items. Item one, under information item, superintendent update, Dr. Krot.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Wilson. This morning, I got an email from one of our principals, and Mrs. Mary Newman Evans, she's a principal at Harold B. Dawson. And she lost her mom this morning. So, I sent an email to all of the principals and cabinet just saying, "Let's keep her and her family in our thoughts." Dr. Coleman actually works very closely with her. And so, yeah, just kind of wanted to share that with the Board that, yeah, there's been a lot of struggles with the family, so let's definitely keep them in our thoughts. And then, an action item that's on the agenda is Illinois Association of School Board. They're just asking for the board to vote on adopting the state's long-term plan, that strategic plan, for 2020. It's very good. I like it a lot. I know our plan is expiring, and we could definitely get some ideas from them, but it's a clear, long-term roadmap to strengthen student achievement, innovation, and operational excellence. So, it's pretty much aligned with the things that we're doing. They also have this new accountability redesign that we're studying. All of our principals, we're looking at it. We're trying to understand it. We've pulled them in to help provide some clarity as well. And so, it, this 2020 strategic plan also, it aligns district accountability and reporting with the updated state performance measures and so forth. So, I just wanted to say, encourage you, let you know it's very good and it's okay that you adopt it so that we can stay aligned with statewide educational priorities. A number of the school districts in our county, I have a list. They've already adopted it. We had a lot more things going on, so I'm like, I'll put it on the back burner. Let's take care of, but we're definitely a team player, and it's very good. I, again, I told Dr. Clark, Brent Clark, it's just very, it's a good, it's a very good plan. That will take the state of Illinois to the next level. And then, just quickly, we have heard a lot about class size, and we've actually been talking about ways that we could mitigate stress. And we've been talking about it for a number of years now. And so, and you've heard, I know you've provided some feedback as a Board. So, one of the things that I wanted to share is that we are going to make some adjustments. And I've actually gotten, McKenna, I've actually gotten a lot of feedback from parents as well regarding this topic and boundary waivers. And so, the team and I have talked about and put a plan together. I know Dr. Corey Molson, Dr. Coleman, they've worked very, very hard. I've gotten feedback from the rest of the team, curriculum, myself. And we were principals, so we, you know, we are, we know the pros and cons, but just making adjustments to when individuals are accepted. And so, you know, it used to be in February, and so, summer, summer, right before school started. And so, now, what we, I think you guys would like this, what we're looking at is, for the most part, for most groups, we'll pilot notifying individuals based on space after school started. And of course, there are pros and cons for that. But we definitely want to make sure that children who reside in that area, in that district, they're not necessarily rerouted. Does that make sense? Okay. So, and then, the other thing that Coach Boone and I have been talking, I've been asking about, that AI detection system that you approved, and you did a lot of, you did due diligence on it. You said, "We want more of that, more of that," and we gave you what you asked for, and you eventually voted on it. And I'm like, "Okay, the Board voted on it. We've paid them. When can I see those things implemented and enacted?" And Chief said, "They're not, they're waiting to have the staff, and they should provide the training in November, I think sometime in November, the training." Everything will start in January. We can expect implementation January 19th at all of the high schools. So, just wanted to share that with you. So, those are just three, three key points that I wanted to share. The Vision 20, Ms. Newman Evans, boundary waivers, and then the open gate safety implementation.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Krot.
The due date is the same? Thank you for asking. The due date is the same. It's just the notification of when there is a space open. That will be delayed until school starts and all of the...
So, they would have to start at the school?
They would have, I know that's a downside to it. Yes, ma'am.
But I mean, is that the answer to the class size? Is that the answer?
Yes.
Or is the answer putting more staff in?
No, it's a big, it's a big, it is a big part of class size, because what we would do is, we would accept, based on openings. Let's say you have eight openings. You would accept eight boundary waiver kids, but then kids move into the area and so forth. Like Charter Rock was a perfect example. I didn't even realize that. Charter Rock had, after we had already committed to boundary waiver students, there were what, twelve? How many new students for Charter Rock that came in? They had to open an entire, because of new students just moving into the area. So, they had to open a twelve additional students. So, and that's the thing about our work. We experiment. We try different things. We see how it goes. But every year, I mean, we have a conversation about class size. So, we truly believe this does have an impact, and we'll monitor it and see, monitor it and evaluate it and come back and provide some feedback as well. It could be, it could be a, you know, temporary fix. Let's see how it goes. But I think it's definitely worth, worth trying this new methodology.
So, the policies that we put together now are going to be policies adapted by new administration. Should we do that now?
So, that's not a policy. It's just a practice.
You're saying that's a practice that we do not have to vote on?
No, you don't. It's just what we've, you know, just moving when we notify parents.
And then, relating to the strategic plan at the state level, do you know, I mean, I looked at the document, and it wasn't, is that the complete strategic plan that's listed in our PowerPoint?
It's the resolution. So, you can just Google it. It's about student achievement and innovation.
I was just wondering, is there a document for strategic planning?
Yeah, I mean, it's readily available. If you Google it right now, you'll get it. I mean, if you want that, I can send, I can give it to Kami. But the resolution summarizes everything that's in the strategic plan. Are you interested in? I can send it to you.
Well, I mean, I'm a proponent of having information that I need to vote on. So, you know, I always ask, I'd like to be an informed voter, see what we're voting on.
Right. You have it as, it's listed in the resolution. All the items are listed.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Yeah. Dr. Krot, would you just clarify for people that people who are currently on boundary waivers, how will those people maybe be impacted by this new thing that you're trying?
Yeah. So, we talked about grandfathering those in. And of course, you know, you have to have good attendance, good behavior. Otherwise, those will automatically be rerouted back to their home schools.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people who are currently on boundary waivers knew if this was affecting them.
They do have to apply every year, right? No, they don't. That's what we talked about. They don't. Once they're in, until they exit out. Yes, that's right. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Dr. Krot?
I'll make sure that Ms. Ross gets the abridged, the unabridged copy of the strategic plan. I will send that to her.
Sounds good. Item number two, financial update. Mr. Willis?
Year-to-date receipts totaled 103.8 million. This compares to 85.7 million two weeks ago. In terms of comparison to budget, that's about forty-three percent of our budget. Historical trend is about 37.8, so we're running ahead of trend with respect to receipts. On expenditures, we're at 85.6 million. This compares to 51.1 million two weeks ago. And we're, in terms of actuals compared to budget, we're at about thirty-four and a half percent, and that's spot on with historical trends. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have with respect to our financial report.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Willis?
I have a question about the financial report, but could you give us an update on the audit?
It's in progress. We, the deadline for, the statutory deadline for the audit is December 15th. Auditors have indicated that we will not make that deadline. Timing as to audit completion is yet to be determined, but we continue to work on it.
I remember last year was January, January before we got the audit. Do you anticipate it being here before January?
No.
Thank you.
Item number three, proposed expenditures over twenty... Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question.
In reference to the audit, Mick, you said we're not going to hit our deadline in reference to it. Is there, does that have something to do with us in terms of being able to get them the information quickly enough in order for them to make sure that we hit the target dateline that we have? I think we ought to strive to hit our bogeys when we should. And if we can't, we ought to understand how to fix it so that following year, we can make sure that we achieve that objective.
Sure. Right now, we are in the process of doing reconciliation between the bank statements and the books. That process is taking longer than it has historically taken. We have enlisted some assistance from our auditing firm to help with that. It's a work in progress and ongoing. As we go through that, as we go through that work, one of the things that we're attempting to rebuild is a good process and procedures for reconciliations in the future so that that's a smoother process in future times, so. We will be, yes. Slightly, yes.
Thank you. Additional questions for Mick Willis? Seeing none? Thank you. Item number three, proposed expenditures over 2,500. Questions for Mr. Willis? Seeing none? Item number four, report on request under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such request. Dr. Krot?
Thank you, President Wilson. Since our board meeting on November 10th, we've received one new request, and there were zero pending requests noted on November 10th at our last meeting. So, there is one total request currently open. To date, we have received fifty requests for the calendar, for the 2025 calendar school year at an estimated cost of $2,450. President Wilson, I, did I send you an update regarding audit?
You did.
Okay. If you want me to include everybody, I can, but Mick and I, Mr. Willis and I do, I try to.
Please do.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice President McConnell.
Consent agenda. Item one, gifts to school district. Number two, payment of bills. Number three, payment for travel. Number four, human resource report. Number five, school calendar years 2026, '27, and '27, '28. Item number six, adoption of the Illinois Vision 2030 resolution. And item number seven, a ten-year lease agreement with Richwood's Youth Baseball, a association, RYBA. Those are the items from consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President McConnell. Are there any items Board members would like to pull for a separate vote? Okay. Number seven? I heard an "and." Is there any others? The seven? Any other items that Board members would like to pull for a separate vote?
Dr. Wilson, can I pull item number five, please?
Absolutely. Item number five?
Yes, please.
Any additional items that Board members would like to pull for a separate vote?
Clarification. The item that I'm pulling, could I ask legal? This is an item that I'd like to table. After, after we go through the others, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, may I have a, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item five and item seven?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostick.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving, do we need a motion in a second to go into this discussion? Okay. We go for it.
Sure, yeah.
So, she could just start? Okay. Okay.
Can we have a discussion?
Yes.
After the motion and second.
Okay. Can I get a motion to discuss item number five?
I move to discuss item number five? I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar for the '26, '27 school year, but not the '27, '28 school year today.
That's not the agenda.
Right.
Before you make the motion, don't you do the discussion first? It's modified. What's on here?
So, is anybody in favor of the current motion? Or the current recommendation?
Yes. Yeah.
Do you make a motion?
She just made the motion. I second it.
No, no. She's making a motion not to approve the recommendation. So, who is in favor?
I would like to offer a motion on the calendar, item number five, to approve.
Prove it as presented.
As presented.
Do we have a second? Now, discussion.
Okay.
Me first? Okay. Sorry about all of that. Okay, so, I have heard from a lot of people over the weekend since the agenda was posted, and it sounds like there are a lot of people who would like their voices to be heard. And I know that this Board cares about that and values that. And so, I would like to approve the '26, '27 school year calendar because I understand that there are staff and other people who just, they need the calendar to continue to like make plans, childcare plans, travel plans, all the things. So, I don't want to delay that. But I would like to, as a Board, consider engaging our stakeholders before approving the '27, '28 calendar. So, that was where that was coming from.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I would also just like to remind you guys that you guys as a Board, well, not all of us, but Lynn, Martha, Paris, Greg, you guys approved this new style of the calendar, the modified calendar. but Lynn, Martha, Paris, Greg, you guys approved this new style of the calendar, the modified calendar, and it's been four years, four school years, we're in our fourth school year of it, and we haven't gotten any community feedback from like teachers or families. So I, I just think it would be a good idea to do that. I, I think it's important that we pass the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar tonight, as you stated, people want to know dates, planning and such, but I also think it's important because we're going to be hiring a new superintendent, we don't know who that is at this time, and because all the school, the school districts around us, we're the only district that has this calendar. I've heard from some single parents that struggle to find childcare and can't take time off. I've heard all kinds of different things from different people. I don't feel like I, I'm at, for me personally, this isn't personal, this is just me representing people that have reached out, I don't mind it at all, but I think it would be nice for whoever is coming in, we're hiring them hopefully in the next couple of months, and then their first year would be this calendar and they could fill it out, maybe they love it, and I respect the time that the calendar committee has spent. Maybe we keep the twenty-seven, twenty-eight exactly like it is, but we just wait and vote on it later and hopefully have the input of the new leader of the district at that same time. Just a thought.
Yeah, just a point of clarity, as we were approving this, we, we did speak to families and to, and the, you know, community, and so, and we do reserve the right, if we wanted to modify it, we can go back, we can look at it next year if we want to, but I think it's wisdom for us to have some kind of action in place so that teachers and families can, can apply.
So do you think it's a good idea to, to do some, some kind of town hall or a survey or something where we could get some community feedback on how people are feeling about it, or teachers?
We can still.
Are you open to doing?
Right, we can still do that.
We're the people who have the power to actually change it if we do want to change it, and I feel like it's important that we listen to everybody and just know that they're hearing us and build trust with the community, I just think it's important. But what you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, are you saying, let's go ahead and do the two years and set it in, and you're willing to revisit it and maybe change it next?
With the new leadership, if they decide they would like to modify it, we always have the option to.
I would like to say that, yes, I was here when we created this calendar and there were, there was a lot of feedback, especially teachers who talked about being burnt out and wanting, wanting breaks, that's why we created those two breaks during the school year, two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall, and I think it's a month or more than a month off in the summer. And the majority of the students that we serve are not the ones that want to have this changed.
How do you know?
Well, because, I mean, the majority of the students that we serve.
But I think the most important point is that you're approving a two-year calendar, but at any time, this board, and usually based on the recommendation of the administration, you have a new one coming in, can amend it.
Correct. I just wonder how we know what the majority of the students feel if we haven't done any type of check-in in the last four years.
And that's a discussion that you guys can have, about what kind of feedback you need.
Right, that's what I'm trying to do, but we're not allowed to talk about it.
All the board members to be comfortable that just because you're approving this tonight, it's not set in stone.
And, am I correct, and we're not allowed to talk about this during executive session?
No.
So that's what I'm, so that's what I'm trying to do, I just want to see if everybody will agree that we could do some kind of, it could be, I'm open to whatever, I just want, I want to gain some trust with our community and I want them to know that we hear them.
So the appropriate process with that would be to set at a future meeting, whether it's this year or next year, an agenda item, where the board gets to discuss the process for setting the calendar.
Okay.
Deliberation item in the future.
Right.
Once we get.
You guys open to that?
New leadership, yeah, once we get the new leadership, yes. Okay, motion on the floor.
Did you? No? Okay.
To go back and revisit it, as you're saying, later, but to go ahead and approve it tonight.
I just want to be clear, I do respect the calendar committee and the time that they've put in, and I just want to make sure we're visiting people and maybe we end up approving exactly what's here and keeping it for two years if that's what people want. I just want us to be open to it and know that you guys are willing to do that, and I would love it if we could create a survey or do a town hall or something because people have been reaching out, so I just want them to know that we hear them and we are here to listen and respect their thoughts too. Absolutely. Because it's been four years, so.
Okay.
Additional discussion? Seeing none, there is a motion on the floor to approve item number five. Madam Secretary? Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic?
Doesn't she need a second?
We've already.
We've already seconded, it's already been. Go ahead. Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
I have a question, can I make, can I vote based on the comments that we will be revisiting this?
No, the motion is to approve the.
Then I'm a nay.
Okay.
Mrs. Ross? Mrs. Wilson?
Nay.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have five ayes, two nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, we have item number seven.
More clarification. Table until the next board meeting, and I need a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. So she's just asking to postpone it until she gets more information?
Do we have to put it out there what clarification we need before we vote?
I think she articulated that earlier, but if you want to do it again, Board Member Ross?
Sure, it's not clear what the, ten years is a long time for us to have a commitment to anyone, and so I would like to hear from our athletic director, actually have him be intricately involved in explaining, you know, why ten years? Or something like this, okay?
This has been, it's just a renewal, right, Dr. Ike, that was your project? This is, this is the first time hearing of this, I guess we could have given all of that information, but is it expired ten years?
No. Yeah, that was twenty years, and that was a mess.
Access to the field, but yeah, we'd be happy to.
What I'm understanding is, is this not Peoria Public Schools Foundation, I mean, Association? This is a, a separate foundation or association that is a not-for-profit that is wanting this. It, it sounds like Richwoods, but it's not, and I want to, I'm looking to find out if there's, if all kids are served, or what does it cost us, or things like that.
That's good, no worries, Ms. Ross, we'll get that, we'll have AJ and Dr. Ike, I think that's a good, good wondering.
I'd like to see our athletic director intricately involved in making these decisions.
Yes, I did, I said.
We have more questions over here.
Yeah, is this a brand-new agreement with a brand-new entity that we've never used before?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's, who are we with right now? Is that the twenty-year that she mentioned with Peoria? Okay, and that was a, how long was that contract that was coming to an end?
Twenty years.
So we were in a twenty-year contract with Peoria Notre Dame?
It was an agreement.
So two things, we have a motion to table.
Yes.
We need to vote on, and I would also encourage board members, if the motion to table is approved, to send in any questions you have before the next board meeting so the administration can do their job to gather the information and get it to you so that when you come to the table, as Board Member Ross said, you have all the information you need to vote.
And, and Mrs. Kostic and I are the buildings and grounds, you know, chairs, but we haven't, you know, we weren't aware of this at all.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you, additional?
Yeah, were you done, so, because I wanted, okay. The Richwoods Youth Baseball Association that is proposing this ten-year license agreement used our fields this year, is that correct? But if they used it this year, what, were they on like a one-year trial basis? Or could someone tell me how they got to use it this year? Okay.
So, but, good question, these are, I know, but these are the questions that should be sent into the administration before, before a board meeting.
I didn't send my questions in because I didn't have any questions, I was ready to approve it. I would like the record to show that, but I am also frustrated that we didn't ask our questions in advance.
Which is why we have a motion to table, which gives you all more time, so now that you're informed on the issue, I would encourage people to send their questions to the administration so they can get it to you so that you're able to vote on an informed basis.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a vote on the motion to table.
Motion on the floor to table. Yes, ma'am.
Who are we to forward the questions to? Is it?
Send it to me, Ms. Kostic. Yes, go ahead and send it to me, whatever questions you have, we'll.
Thank you.
We'll make sure Dr. Ike and AJ come prepared. I think it's good because they help take care of the fields, it's, it's, you know, they do the, all of the landscaping and that sort of thing, so, but yeah. So we'll, we'll get an objective, yeah, I think it's a good idea, Ms. Ross, so just be transparent and, yep.
So there's a motion on the floor to table item seven. Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell? Mrs. Rose?
Nay.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have six ayes, one nay, motion carries.
Thank you, moving along, we have deliberation agenda.
Item number eight, policy number eight, colon, twenty-two, building rental, the proposed action that the Board of Education approved the attached updated policy.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item number nine, policy number six, colon, two thirty-five, access to electronic networks, proposed action that the Board of Education approved the attached updated policy.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item ten, policy number seven, colon, twenty, harassment of students prohibited, proposed action that the Board of Education approved the attached updated policy.
Madam Secretary? Oh, sorry, Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item number eleven, policy number seven, colon, fifteen, student and family privacy rights, proposed action that the Board of Education approved the attached updated policy.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item number twelve, policy number seven, colon, ten, equal education opportunities, proposed action that the Board of Education approved the attached updated policy.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson? President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item number thirteen, policy number two, colon, twenty, powers and duties of the school board, idenification, proposed action that the Board of Education approved the attached updated policy.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic? Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve expulsion listed on the report, dated November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Item fifteen, expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abeyance, proposed action is that the Board of Education approve expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abeyance listed on the report dated November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, be approved as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
President Wilson?
Aye.
We have seven ayes, motion carries.
Presentations and suggestions by board members.
In the past, number seven on the agenda says response to audience presentation. I thought board members at that time have given responses to the audience because a lot of times they leave after they speak, so I'm glad that, McKenna, I'm glad you're still here, I just wanted to tell you that you did a great job. Most adults I know get too nervous to do things like that, so it's really great that you're doing that, I'm proud of you. Thank you, and you did a great job. Is Mr. Shannon still here? Mr. Shannon had a question, he had asked the board how many applications we received, and while I don't have a specific number, I do know that we got a notification, it was last week before it closed, and it said that despite the tough climate for recruiting in this type of job nationally, we were still getting a really steady, it sounded like it picked up before we closed our window, so it sounded like a steady amount of applications were coming in, so that was a good thing. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, dittle on that as well, public speaking is not easy, I still get nervous up here, I'm nervous right now talking, so. Great job to you for your advocacy, for sure. Any other presentation and suggestions by board members?
I would simply, Mr. President, just state, we, I had a chance to attend the conference, and it was my first conference, and so I had no preconceived notions, but, you know, when I go to something, I'm really trying to learn something and understand how do we compare to everyone else, and I can tell you, I was pleasantly surprised at the degree of respect that District One Fifty had throughout the conference. There were some things, like, as an example, that was a conversation about board members going to visit the principals and going to the schools, and one lady said that, you know, they cannot do that, that they don't get an opportunity, that if they do it, that they have to make sure that they get approved by the principal. I can tell you, my first experience with Dr. Carr, when I decided I was going to go visit a couple of schools, she encouraged it, and, and I was proud to let the lady know that we don't have that, we don't have that problem at all. And there were some other things, I think, we highlighted, there were some things too, I think I learned that we could do better, because they had the super, what do you call it, the super, super evolve evaluation that was kind of unique in terms of evaluations, I thought could be helpful to us at the same time. So I just want to commend the district for, you know, making sure that we had the opportunity, especially myself, to go listen and learn and spend some time with all my colleagues, and I think we're better from that. I hope as we move forward into the next year and perhaps new board members, that we collectively never lose sight of what we're here for, and that sight is for the kids. We can differ in our opinions, but we are not to differ in reference to what our objectives are, and that is to serve the kids and make sure that we do the best we can. And, and it's, and it's great to disagree sometimes, you know, it's, it's okay. But to be disagreeable and respect each other at the same time is the utmost importance, so I'm encouraged by what I see. I think we have a great team of people, a great overall team, and so I'm excited to, you know, just from my perspective, to acknowledge the fact that, you know, we're not perfect, but we're better than average.
Just to piggyback off that, Dr. Ivory, I actually had the opportunity to sit in and be a panel member for engaging communities, strategies, structures, and tactics, and thank you to the board members that came to that as well. It was a very engaging conversation, and just to kind of go back with what Larry said, individuals in the crowd were, you know, like, they kept coming up to us after the panel was over to continue to get advice and feedback from the stuff that we are doing here at Peoria Public Schools, so that was awesome to see, and definitely was grateful to be a part of that panel, so I wasn't even going to say nothing, but since you brought that up. Ms. Kostic?
Excuse me, Building and Grounds will meet on December the. Excuse me. Building and grounds will meet on December the 10th, 2025, and we'll do it online as usual.
Awesome, thank you. So reports from board committees. Any other reports?
I just wanted to say, while we were at the training in Chicago and as well as the training we went to in September in Los Angeles, the CUBE Conference, every district that I spoke to knew who Dr. Karat was. It's like they saw Peoria on my name tag, and they're like, oh, you have Dr. Karat. Like, she is famous. People, people, it, it's just, I'm a new board member, so I haven't been to any trainings until these two, but everyone knows you and everyone loves you. And it's your last year, so it must be a good feeling to know that you've. That's what I tell them. No, I know. No, I just thought that was pretty cool and I wanted to share that because it happened this weekend. Again, like, oh, Peoria, Dr. Karat, everyone knows you.
Yeah, that's a fact.
I just, let's see, am I on, yeah. I just want to just kind of dovetail on what the speaker said about the search firm and the timeline. The timeline was set by the board. The firm did not set the timeline at all. We, we told them what we wanted, and they sent out to us any changes that they wanted to make or whatever. So it's not them that made the timeline on applications or any of this. The board set those timelines. Board members set those timelines. So just to be clear.
Reports from board committees?
Can I say it?
Yeah, sure.
Our next policy meeting is January 20th at 9:30 in the morning.